Welcome, everybody. Called a meeting to order. Before we do that, I would just like to take everybody to take just a moment to silence for some of our community members that we've lost here just recently. Just for a moment, please. Thank you. Okay, and then moving forward, we have public comment period, and number one is Mr. K. Hudson.
I'm a backup. Vern Hay is the one that's going to speak.
Okay, well done, Mr. Vern Hay.
For those of you that don't...
Talk to the council meetings.
And you can back up. You don't have to stand right there.
Okay, I think everybody here knows me. I'm Vern Hay. I'm the local representative to the Flint Hill Scenic Byways, which is a part of the National Scenic Byways Group. Specifically, what I'm here to do, and using K. here as a backup, is advocating to reestablish the radio system that was previously in the scout cabin that was torn down. And I understand that the basic radio equipment is here in City Hall. And I know that the number that the Federal Communications Commission utilizes is the number here at the City Hall. And the local committee on the scenic byways, which we met last week, tasked me, one, to find the basic black box and the antenna, and to hopefully get it reinstalled and operating. The group... Let me digress here. The radio equipment, there are three radio stations, one here, one in Cassidy, and one in Cottonwood Falls. The other two are marginally operating, and this one's totally out of commission. If we can get the antenna established somewhere and hooked up, which requires, one, a phone line and electricity, there is a group in Topeka that originally installed the equipment that will handle all the paperwork and machinations required with the FCC, and will come out here and tweak it and coordinating all three stations. Having said that, I'm going to turn this over to K., and he's going to make a pitch as exactly why we need to do this.
Vern, can... Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, go ahead. I have a couple, too.
One thing I will say, I dropped the ball on this because Nick asked me to contact K. to try to get a contact information on who we could get to help put it up, and I dropped the ball on that. So there is some effort to try to do it, but I'm sorry, I dropped the ball on that.
There is a bit of a timeframe to get this done.
You said that there's a local committee? Who all is on that committee, Vern?
The local committee is... Oh, golly. We meet down in Strong City area periodically.
I can help you out with that. That's right.
Two or three people from each one of the towns that are in the Flint Hill Scenic Byway. The county commissioners appoint one, the city council, and each one of the towns appoints one. Vern was appointed by the county commissioners. You appointed me when I was chamber director as the local one, and when I wasn't chamber director anymore, I assumed you would appoint somebody else, but I don't believe anybody's been appointed. So I believe we only have one representative there now. So the city of Council Grove is not represented since I left for the last meeting.
Okay. And who... So the city council and the county commissioners in each town are the ones who appoint that?
Yes, and it has to be an official appointment. Like when you appointed all of the other city committees, you added, you know, you quoted Diane Wolf as the Flint Hill Scenic Byway representative for the city of...
When were you appointed? Because I don't remember.
Oh, like in 2015.
Okay, that's why I don't think... I don't have any records of that committee.
Yeah, 2015.
That's why we're all about this look like. I don't have that committee.
And then what is the name of the group in Topeka?
Flint...
The Travel and Tourism, Kansas Travel and Tourism.
Kansas Travel and Tourism. And who actually paid for the equipment the first time?
I think a fellow by the name of Charlie Clam paid for that, and this goes back, I think, to the period when Dick Montgomery was mayor.
Maybe get a little history here, and that'll help clear up some stuff, perhaps.
One of the individuals that is pushing for this, and he's a volunteer, is Ken Clam, who is Charlie Clam's son.
Is that C.L.A.M.?
K.L.A.M.
K.L.A.M.
Charlie's deceased.
Pardon?
Charlie is deceased now.
Right, yes.
Charlie owned the fiber factory in Cottonwood Falls. Any of you familiar with that?
You ask who some of the members...
Use the microphone, Vern.
Eleanor Lincoln, out of Cottonwood Falls, Heather Brown, down at the...
Tallgrass.
Tallgrass Prairie Preserve. Myself, and there's a couple other individuals that, quite frankly, I don't know their names.
No, that gives us an idea. And so theirs all need to be upgraded as well?
They need to be tweaked. And I understand, once we get this established and running, then this volunteer group out of Topeka will come out and coordinate all of them, tweak them.
So we've been looking at this, and I know we talked last council meeting about doing something so it's digital, so it can be changed more frequently than recording it and then go putting in a new recording. Is that something that's possible with this? I think if we're going to spend the money, it needs to be more usable, I guess, in my opinion.
More up to date.
Yeah, more up to date.
It can be... The message can be updated periodically.
Well, I understand that. I think the thing with me on it is that we had the same message from 2004 until we took it down to 2017 and never got updated. So I think what I would...
One of the other things I was tasked with was to find someone that would do the message that's on there and highlight, and it's really a situation where they're selling...
Right. I get it. I just... I'm trying to think of a way to make it easier, more user-friendly, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Where it's digital, where you can go on a computer, update the message, and you're done. Instead of trying to find somebody, do the recording, try to find a quiet space, and then get somebody over there, put in a new recording, and you know what I'm saying, Vern?
Yeah. Quite frankly, I don't know, you know, technically how it's being done.
Yeah, just updating the equipment, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Would there be any chance that the committee could visit with the state to see if the state would help do that? I mean, it's...
Help do which?
To update, to maybe make it into a digital so that each community could update what's going on.
Because you said the other two are barely used, and my guess is that they have a hard time finding people that have time to go update that information and do a recording and then go put it in and do all those things.
Who is the contact you have at Kansas Tourism?
I don't know. This is the...
The contact that has been our contact for day one was Sue Stringer, and she just retired in June. And I do not know who they hired to replace Sue.
Nor do I. Sue Stringer was very helpful on the whole raft of things.
Yeah, everyone's, I think, on board with doing it. I think that questions I have are just, is there a better way to do it if you're going to spend the money?
I have a question, and this is probably to K. Is Ken Clam, is he...
Ken?
No.
No. Charlie's dead. Did he die too?
Ken Clam is dead. Ken Clam is very much alive.
Ken Clam, is he going to be the financial backer of this, or is he just a supporting person in this?
I'm not on that committee anymore, so it's Vern who can answer that. But I think Kansas Travel and Tourism is the one that wants to see it up and active again and things.
Yes.
It's a part of their program.
So I guess, is there anybody that's a financial backer on this program?
Council group. Each community took that as a responsibility.
On each community. So who... What does Ken Clam do in this whole thing?
He is the son, quite frankly, of Charlie Clam.
Yeah, we've established that. But what does he do?
He's carrying on the tradition, and he's one that'll be pushing as far as the technology and that sort of thing, and these folks are out of Topeka. As far as I know, have no real financial support.
I guess a question I'd like to have somebody I can contact to see if there's a way to update this stuff. I think that's the number one thing I'd like to...
So if we're needing as a contact in Topeka, that if they're the ones that are pushing to get it going...
I just need to know that. I just...
I guess maybe contact, it can ask who's taking Sue Stringer's place.
Right, I would just call and talk to Kelly Hilliard because she loves Council Grove. She cares about Council Grove, and she would get you to the correct person.
Okay, I'll do that.
Not Kelly Hilliard anymore, but she got married.
Really? I didn't know that.
Meyer Willis. I can't remember, but I've got it in my notes.
And she just got married.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I'll get the name from somebody, so...
Orinder.
Huh?
Orinder.
Oh, yeah, it was clear off. Orinder, that is right. Orinder.
That sounds a lot easier to spell.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'm not so...
But anyway, I agree with Nick. I think that we all think it's a good thing. It's just that, you know, it needs to be more up to date, something that's more timely. People that are coming, you know, when they get on it and it's old information, they're not going to get on it again, nor are they probably going to pay any attention to it. So it's not really usable.
The other trick would be to get it so it's AM and FM.
This is a national service program, the 1680, Travelers Information Radio, it's called, and I don't think they plan to use FM, but anyway, it is an AM, and that frequency's available all across the country. So wherever place you go, you can turn to 1680 and find out some information about that. I'm going to respond to this about the messages that were old, didn't get changed. The messages were all about the historic sites. None of the historic sites changed. So you didn't do record it, and maybe you heard it 100 times, but the guy driving from California to New York heard it once. So, yeah, you got tired of hearing it, but they only heard it once.
But, K., it would say, you know, be sure to see the post office open, but there were no hours on there, and it was never open. Things like that were going on, you know, so that doesn't...
I just, I think, I see, if we're going to do it, it needs to be more usable, just so like we can put events on there and do other things besides just historical stuff.
I agree with the events.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm not taking a shot at anybody that didn't update it or anything like that. What I'm saying is that from '04 to 2017, it was the same message. And if we're going to spend the money to do it, it needs to be more usable so you can promote more things on it if you're going to spend the money on it.
It's very usable. You just pick up a telephone, and you record the messages on the telephone handset on your desk. So that's how easy it is to do. And if you want to do it, and this is when I was here six weeks ago with all the events coming up, I thought we could have activated, boy, we could have had a lot of announcements on there about various events and when they were going to take place and where they were and things like that. But the historic sites won't change, so those messages will be there. But you can add a message anytime you want to, and it has an instant override if the chief of police needs to get on there and say, "We've got two people going fast through town." Somebody get in front of him on the east side or something. He could do that. But it's... The messages on the historic sites probably aren't going to change, and change them anytime you want to.
As a minister of two historic sites here in town, I would love to see it where we could put, once the museum actually opens up, we could put the operating times on there. If somebody's coming through town and want to come to the commission, they would know what time it's open. If the post office, museum is open, you know, things like...
Well, the message is recorded with a handset on the telephone.
Well, we need somebody that has a good radio voice probably to do that, K.
Thank you.
What, Vern, you said that there was a timeline on this?
Then, obviously, if they have to climb antennas and that sort of thing, they want it done prior to cold weather.
Oh, we got time, then.
I'll get contact. I'll get, call the tour call and see if she can direct me and get something.
So Kelly Hilliard, the one that told you the...
First person.
Like I say, I apologize because Nick did ask me to contact you, K., and I dropped the ball on that.
I'd be happy to voice some of the announcements.
Thank you, K. We appreciate that. And thanks for bringing it up again, and we'll see what we can get done with it. Thank you all. Okay, next, we have Ken McLintock.
My hearing impairment, I couldn't hear everything that's going on there, but you're talking about the byway radio station. I've supported that for a long time. I taught both with Mark Brooks and Jason Booker about that. Some years ago, I prepared a script to go on that, and it needs to be revised at this point, so I'm willing to help out if that's needed. My project here tonight, I'm about, is about the Hermit's Cave, and it's been in horrible shape for several years. We started several years ago to make it handicap accessible. Grant monies didn't show up. I'm on the Historic Sites Committee with Mark Brooks and Sharon Hawn and Diane Wolf, and we've discussed things about it. My current idea, I have not discussed with them, my proposal is to use some of the 1% sales tax money to fully fund that project. Grants didn't show up, and in the middle of April, the city published its quarterly financial statement, and it showed at that time that in the 1% sales tax fund, there was $947,000 sitting in the bank. And at the beginning of the year, it was $830,000. So I thought, well, some of that could be used to fix up the Hermit's Cave. It's an embarrassment to the city at the present time and has been for years. Every once in a while, visitors at the Trail Days Cafe and Museum ask me what the deal is with the Hermit's Cave. And we approved some plans here several years ago. I think some adjustments need to be made, needs to be reconsidered, and make a decision on it. But when I found out there was $940,000 sitting there, I started to try to find out how much of it's committed for what, and I've not been able to find that out, except that the city council at the present time has budgeted for the year $400,000 out of that $940,000. Well, it started out with $830,000. So $200,000 has been designated for infrastructure, $100,000 for recreation, $100,000 for the grant fund. And so if you take $400,000 off of the $830,000, you have $430,000 to work with. If half of that is infrastructure, there's $215,000 right there off the top. Plus, the monies are being replenished all year because it's a sales tax run. I don't know how often the city gets the reimbursements from the state on the sales tax, so... But by the end of the year, you should have your $400,000 back, so starting in 2022, you'd have your $830,000 to work with again. And if half of that is for infrastructure, you've got $400 and some thousand dollars to work with. Surely, we can do the Hermit's Cave for a tiny fraction of the $400,000. Now, I would normally have discussed this with the Historic Sites Committee and make some decisions and recommendations. So what I'm saying today is just purely Ken McLintock. It's not the Historic Sites Committee, and I'm not trying to speak for them. I'm speaking for Ken McLintock. And... But I didn't feel in a position to bring a subject up before the committee to make a decision and a recommendation to the council until I could find out what the money situation was. And I've had a very difficult time finding out what the money situation is. So using the figures that I found in the newspaper, that's what I've based my information on. The second quarter financial statement has not been published yet, or if it has been, I've missed it somehow. But there should be a report for the June 30, end of the quarter, June 30. So I don't know how much is up or down. But in that first quarter, there was only $22,000 that was spent, and $132,000 came in. So that's why it jumped to $110,000 over the three-month period. Now, I assume there's been expenses since then, and I assume there's been money come in since then. So I do not know how much is there. But since the city disobligated $400,000 out of that, there's got to be a half a million dollars sitting there. So I'm asking that we find out just exactly how much money is there. It's my understanding that only the $400,000 is what the city is obligated for. There's been no commitments or something for the extra monies that are sitting there over and above the $400,000. So that needs to be verified, and the committee needs to know how much money there is sitting there. And like I say, I've been trying to find that out for several months, and so I'm here to plead with you because this is the month you have to make your budget decisions, and if I wait another month, it's too late. So here I am, kind of out of sequence. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to say about all that?
Well, I would agree with Ken. It needs to be finished.
Well, I can tell you guys, right now, what we've got obligated is about $550,000 out of there, because you have health insurance, you have Washington Street Project, you have the Jason Ziler that we just budgeted for, and then you have Tourism Media with Deidre, and one's going to have Restored Media, that's $36,000. So you have about $550,000 out of that obligated.
What was the actual total before that?
The total of it is right out of a million dollars.
A million dollars.
So... And what you try to do when you budget is you want to carry over 40% to 50% of your budget to the next year, start of the year, so...
I think one thing before we ever, before we start looking at that, we ought to go back and look at the plans and give it some careful thought, probably get Hartman's, who are the ones that seem to help us the most in that, but really determine what we can do to finish that, and maybe not go to the extreme that that original plan was laid out. You know, it's been a long time since we've looked at that.
I think originally, when I started, you had applied for a grant...
Yeah, we did.
For $90,000. I don't know that even covered the whole amount.
Yeah, more than covered it at that point, yeah.
The majority of the cost was the handicap part of it.
Yeah, it was. And again, I just think if we back off and look at that, sometimes those figures and the architects' plans, we might, I don't know. I just think if we're going to think about it at all, let's go really look at those plans very carefully and determine what really needs to be done before we start trying to figure out if we could cover it.
Well, originally, there wasn't much, there wasn't much land there. The cave was basically, there was really even no place to stand in front of the cave when we started this. And I think a lot of that project was to bring more surface down there, and that's been done.
Yeah.
When Hartman went in there and tore out, you know, there was pieces of sidewalk that had been cemented in, and it was just a...
Created a cave.
Yeah, this cobbled up, this cobbled up mess that was there. And to do that, they had to bring heavy equipment in there, and they created some of that. So some of that cost may not be as much, but it's still not handicap accessible. And the stairs are very dangerous that are there. One of the original plan was to do away with the stairs to create a more safe avenue down to the cave. But I would agree with Councilman Hawn that, yeah, we need to go back and look at it. Ben Moore was our architect who came up with the plans. He can be a little pricey.
Well, I would also like to hear some information or maybe feedback from the community as to the infrastructure money can be, infrastructure money can be used in a lot of different ways or maybe, you know, and see what the community feels, if the community feels that that's a good place for us to spend the money.
We got a lot of projects we're talking about doing, like camping spots, we're working on the amphitheater, we're working, talking about, worked on the alleys, I mean, it's a lot of that.
But I will say, it's our property, and we have a responsibility to take...
I don't disagree with you, Mark. You said we just got to prioritize what's at the top and what's at the bottom.
I mean, that's what started the Historic Sites Committee when I first got on the council. We were not taking care of our historic sites whatsoever. When I got on here, they actually said it was the Chamber of Commerce's responsibility to take care of the historic sites, and I was like, how could that be when we own them? And that's what created the Historic Sites Committee.
Well, I know we've talked about, you know, that the jail needs some work, and we've got, you know, we've got, and that one's very visible, you know, we need to kind of prioritize...
That's not going to be a very expensive...
No, it shouldn't be.
And I got somebody that's volunteered to actually do that on the Historic Sites Committee.
We just need to come up with a formula, what we need to do that.
Good. That's good to hear. The other thing is, is I do think we need to, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't do the cave. I think the cave is awesome. I think it could be a very good draw for our community, but I do think that, you know, we want to do it right when we do it, so it is something that people want to come see, not just kind of, well, let's just throw some money at it and make it, you know, AA and forget about it. We think we need to make it, you know, something that people want to come see. And I, and it concerns me a little bit about having this money. I think it's good that we have this money. We are getting ready to face two years where we won't have...
Quite the same sales tax.
The sales tax probably won't be the same because this road will be inaccessible to us, it sounds like, or almost inaccessible. So we'll close down a little bit on our tourism. We hope not, but we have to look ahead to that, so...
Ken, are you able to hear what we're saying?
No.
Can somebody sign for him?
I wish I could sign.
I mean, he's here to get some answers, and it would be nice if he could hear what we're saying.
So Sharon's idea to revisit, and maybe she's hopefully put together...
What Sharon's suggesting is that you guys get together and reevaluate your plans and get new costs. And then we can have a discussion about it.
Yeah, right.
So that's what Sharon's proposing.
Okay.
So I think that's a fair...
That's not all we're going to do.
It's be a good start, and then we can go from there.
Because it's been too long.
Yeah.
And we need to just look at it.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It's not to say that we don't...
That was right when I started.
Sharon wasn't on the city council then.
It was even before that.
Oh, before that? I just know she wrote the grant. Me and her talked about it, because I looked at the grant.
It's about when Mark started.
It's like a binder.
Not long after.
Before you got here, I wrote, I've done it twice.
Were you rejected on the grant?
We did it for the historic preservation.
Did they give you a reason? Why was rejected? Well, we applied for the Heritage Trust, through the Kansas Historicals.
That's the one I was...
Yes, yeah. Well, we've done it twice. I think the problem with that one is that most of those grants go to private property owners and people who just are, you know, they get a piece of property on the National Register and want new windows, and that seems to be where they put the money.
Is there a 50-50 or matching grant or anything like that we could look into on that?
There's probably some other smaller ones, and that's a good point. We ought to look at some of those.
Tourism grant.
Yeah, I think that would be, if we could get some grant money and say, just getting the matching portion, I think that's a...
Even a federal tourism grant, you know, the caves are rejected, not very frequently in Kansas.
When you think of Kansas, you don't think of a cave, do you?
And so even if...
It's not really a cave, but...
It's a cliff.
Yeah.
It's overhanging.
But the story, it being with the Santa Fe Trail and him ending up down there.
The story of the Hermit is probably the most fascinating part of it. It's not so much the location of the cave, it's the story of the Hermit.
Yeah, but that can all be included in a grant.
Absolutely.
And I think, like I said, there might be some federal grants. I don't know if we could, would Rosemary be able to research some of that?
Here's what I'm going to suggest. The CARL program is going to be here pretty soon, and the gal that presented the CARL thing says she knows a bunch of people that deal with grants like that. Even when Shirley was here, she goes, "I know a grant that could help Shirley." So I think they're a good resource when they get here, that we should sit down and talk to them because they know about all the grants in the state.
And they're interested in... And they're interested in helping us, so that would be good.
And they wanna help us. So I think that's where I was going with some of this stuff, is talking to them because they know about grants that I don't know about.
Well, the Historic Sites Committee's plan from day one was just to return it back to the way it looked possibly like when the Herman actually lived in it. Over, over the hundred and some years, you know, the citizens of Crouch Grove have, have kinda molded it into something that it really wasn't. And we wanted to return it back to that and have it safe. The stairs, again, are not safe at all. And older folks cannot go down those stairs without possibly falling. And we get a lot of bus groups that go up there too, so. No, I think it all sounds like a good plan.
Okay, well, if you want to-
Well, this, we're, we need to have a meeting here pretty soon anyway, so we'll call a meeting.
Well, it's, it's good to bring it, it's good to push us a little bit on some things.
Well, and you might, you might get those plans to the rest of the council too, so they can just take a look at it.
They might be here.
They're not familiar with them.
We'll see what we can find.
I still, I still have the grant, I'm sure you have a copy of it too.
Yeah, we do.
So.
Would Rosemary be able to research a grant that might be available for that?
I can email her and ask.
Okay.
Well, we, we hired her.
I think, I think that's-
We hired her, and she did nothing for us. We paid her, and I would not, I don't feel comfortable going with her again. We paid her to get, get grants for this cave, and she did nothing.
Maybe we'd find someone else.
I think the Carl people are the ones, that's the ones I'm interested in. Yeah, 'cause I've emailed back and forth that later.
You're talking about Susan St. Kles?
I'm correct on that, aren't I? That we paid, we did pay her, I think so.
She didn't do anything.
Well, I remember the conversation, I think it was with you, Sharon, saying that you guys are having a hard time getting grants, and you were paying somebody to-
It was her.
And I don't remember, that was three and a half years ago, so.
It is an opportunity, we need to research and see what we can do. And then we can, you know, we have, we've already budgeted pretty much, Ken, but we can go forward. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, I should say we've budgeted, we've discussed budgeting.
Well, we're stuck, so once we send that to, I sent that information to Calum where her date is and everything, that's, it's done. So, and that's what I told you and sent it to-
We can amend our budget.
Did we not have to have a budgetary?
Well, we do, we do, but once I submit it to the clerk-
Oh, it's there.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay, gotcha, okay. All right, moving forward, let's go to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the previous meeting, the appropriations, and there are no late cap and transfers. Would somebody please make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Second?
Oh, second.
All right, thank you, Sharon. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Oh, business, the North River Walk extension update, we've had that quite a great one.
Yeah, well, S and J Lurcher is gonna be here Monday, they're gonna move in Monday and start work. The reason they were behind, like everybody else is a contractor, they're having a hard time getting materials, wire. They finally got some in, so they plan on being here Monday, moving in Monday and getting to work on the lights. So I got that information today from Brady Hestrom with BG Consultants, so that's the plan for that. And once they get done tearing everything up, the other crew will come in and do the grass and all those things. But they didn't wanna do the grass and then have them come in and tear everything up.
Down at the bottom, were we planning to put some benches or tables or anything? I've been asked that.
So, yeah, there's gonna be a light down there, Jeff's guys are gonna clear it. They've got it all sprayed and it's dead down there now, and they've mowed a path in there and everything. They're gonna go down there either tomorrow, by the end of the week, it's gonna be all cleaned up so they can get and put a flywire on the light pole, so.
Will there be a chance to maybe bolt those things down, or do you think the kids will throw those things in the river?
The big light, no, it's the light pole is like what's on the river.
No, oh, I'm talking about like-
Benches.
Benches or tables. I've had some people ask me that, that's why I'm asking.
We can try to do something, I mean, we can pour concrete into the ground and bolt it to, I mean, chain it, it's probably a good idea anyways.
There's, there's a lot of flat stone down there anyway, you might be able to just drill into the stone.
And it's a good idea anyways, because if the corps decides to let out water and we don't have time to be done, they're moving.
They could flow.
Yeah, so I don't know, those tables are really heavy though, those rubber tables, I mean, they're heavy. But anyways, yeah, we've, we've thought about all that stuff.
Okay.
What's, what's the timeframe on the lighting?
Uh, they're gonna start Monday.
A week, two weeks?
That, I don't know. Just depends on what they run into over there. I know when they did the, the, uh, concrete sidewalks along the dam down here and by Valley Street, they weren't planning to run it into all that cut stone that was in there, and that slowed them down a little bit. So I don't know when he starts, you know, trenching into the ground, what he's gonna hit. So he may hit rock and decide that he has to use an excavator to dig his holes so he can get the, get the line in the ground.
And they do know that that occasionally gets underwater and it's all okay like the rest?
Yeah, everything's sealed. It's no different than what we did down at the amphitheater. Everything gets put in, in, yeah, in conduit that's sealed, so it won't get water in it.
And I also noticed that some, there are a few places where the dirt is kind of washing on when we've got heavy rains.
Yep, and they're gonna take, when, when they put down the stuff to secure the dirt-
Then that'll take care of that.
That'll take care of that, 'cause I've asked about that.
Okay.
So.
I think it's a better time to be putting grass in than in the middle of summer anyway.
Yeah.
Towards fall, towards fall.
Cools off a little bit.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Scott? You're welcome. All right, new business, remove the dead trees at Greenwood Cemetery.
We've talked about this for a couple of years now, probably, the tree, dead trees at Greenwood. We got some that are rotten at the top and they're becoming dangerous, so we have to do something about them. I had Jeff borrow, talk to Slosson, Terry Slosson and Chris Land to get bids. He met them over there, showed them the trees, and then got bids from them, and turned them in there anyway, so.
Are they sealed bids?
Yes, well, I mean, his is sealed, and this is, he gave me a full good one, so, and I didn't talk to anyone about their bids. So, um, but anyways, Slosson's is first. His bid is three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to remove nine dead pine trees, and he said there's one cedar tree that has the top broke out of it, that's a hazard that he thinks should be taken down. And for additional five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, he would grind all the stumps.
Forty-three total?
Yep, forty-three total. And then Mr. Chris Land, his bid was nine-thousand dollars with fifteen-hundred dollars to grind the stumps. And he told me one of his big concerns, even though he has insurance, some of those trees where they're located, there's very old headstones, and he's worried about how much, if he drops a branch on one, it's gonna cost him, and that's why his bid's so high. He said, my bid's high, and this is the reason why. I said, okay. But they all both have liability insurance and they're both bonded, so.
Okay, guys have questions concerning that?
And that number of trees, I mean, is that based on what they look at or what you-
No, that's Jeff, Jeff, Jeff went over there, and I've been over there too and looked at them with Jeff.
How many are there?
Nine, they're pine trees, nine dead pine trees. I think you've seen a lot of the pine trees around the area have died. And we're probably gonna have more that do that over there, because there's a lot of pine trees over there.
And Slosson's actually included one cedar as well.
He's seen, he, when he was walking around with Jeff out there, he saw this cedar that has the top all broke out of it, which he thinks is gonna be a hazard at some point, somebody walking under it or something.
Might as well do it when they have it.
Right, when he's there. But where those trees are located, it's not an easy task. We have to have equipment, the right equipment to do it, bucket trucks and all that, so you don't tear up the headstones, so.
Those pine trees are about a hundred and twenty years old, so.
Yeah.
They probably just hit the end of their life, probably.
I don't know that replant them is something that we will wanna do, but that's the decision.
I've had people tell, I've had people tell me that they don't think we should. Around the headstones anyways.
Just so many cemeteries are going to more.
One is, one, it's hard to, you gotta mow around them. Two, branches falling out, landing on headstones or, and whatnot.
The needles and all.
Yep, so.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion concerning those two bids?
No, no.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept Terry Slosson's bid and do the stumps for a total of forty-three hundred.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? They moved a second minute to accept Terry Slosson's bid of forty-three hundred. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Will that come out of the cemetery fund?
Cemetery endowment fund, that's why the resolution's on here. So if you guys remember, that, we have transferred money by resolution from the cemetery endowment fund into the cemetery general fund in order to use the funds that are there. So that's what the next thing is, is the resolution for that.
Okay, and you're talking exactly the forty-three hundred?
Yep, whatever, you can only take out what the cost of the work you're doing.
The work is done, okay. So do I hear a motion to accept a resolution, or do a resolution for forty-three, to remove forty-three hundred dollars from the cemetery endowment fund to the cemetery fund?
So moved.
Okay. Hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
And that resolution's oh-eight, oh-three, twenty-one dash oh-one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is a community events application for the Arts Council for Set Fest.
Yeah, so I know Sharon, you're on there, Mark's on there. And what they're asking, I actually have the whole thing up here typed up. So Friday, August twenty-first, they wanna have visual artists and musicians down at the businesses, which we talked about before, kinda like last time they had it from six to eight. They also will set up a business selling their goods or playing music. Saturday, August twenty-first, they have an event out, have a visit throughout the day, and they're planning on having a memorial for Max from twelve, ten to twelve at the amphitheater. Mural unveiling and cornhole tournament.
AM, night, day?
Ten to AM, sorry.
Okay, I just-
Yeah, ten to twelve at night.
Yeah, well, that-
I know, yeah, I know, that's my fault, my type.
That's okay, no.
So, it's AM, sorry. So ten, ten to twelve AM at the amphitheater, and then they'll have a mural unveiling and cornhole tournament at and sponsored by Grove Gardens. Community Arts Council will be hushing the kids activities at the amphitheater area from four to six. It will include face painting, ice cream, community band playing at various businesses from six to eight. The event will conclude with bands at the amphitheater from eight to ten. As far as their cleanup, there's nine board members and volunteers will be present. Cleanup will take place after events are complete. Porta-cots, trash bins will be available for patrons. This is also a non-alcoholic event.
Do you have anything to say about that?
Um, Saturday night, we talked a little bit about potentially needing some electricity, if possible, off of streetlights, if we had some need for amps and things like that.
There's, there's plug-ins online.
Yeah, we wanna make sure we have permission to use those.
Okay, yeah, that wasn't important, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I, we talked about that though, so.
The two that they put up there, they're temporary but easy to plug in.
You're talking about on Main Street, or you're talking?
Talking about lights.
Oh, absolutely.
He's talking about downtown.
I'm talking about downtown, yeah.
Yeah.
They have to be, actually, they have to be turned on downtown.
Yeah, they have to come unscrew the stuff and-
That's why we're asking.
For Friday night?
Saturday, I think it would be Saturday, wouldn't it?
Friday, they're supposed to be downtown playing music too.
Oh, they're-
Well, actually, I thought Friday is artists and Saturday night is music.
Yeah, Saturday night's gonna be actual artists playing, you know, they might have an amp to plug in. We didn't move this last year, but the year before we, when we did it, it was a Friday night event then, but they moved that to Saturday. But in Max's tradition, more artists showed up than they had expected, so they needed extra-
Gotcha.
Extra power. So that might be something that needed to be included in that, just so that if we needed it, that it's there.
So there will be music downtown on Friday and Saturday?
I think it's just Saturday. Friday night's gonna be actual art.
Oh, visual art. It says, it says visual arts and musicians.
Visual art on Friday, musicians on Saturday.
What she, what she submitted to me today, Mark, is what it's up here. Artists and musicians will be set up at business selling their goods or playing music.
There could be some music on Friday, but the majority of it's Saturday.
So here, here's my question, do you guys have, like, the people that are gonna need the electricity, do you have a place, do you know where they're gonna be located at downtown? Because depending on, you know, where they're at, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
So we need to-
Some of them are gonna be in businesses in front of businesses, so they'll, they'll be taken care of there. But if we have any overflow, then we would probably need some extra power.
Okay.
That's kinda what we're talking about.
Okay.
And so what's the-
Well, can we designate an area where the overflow goes to, so might the guys know where to make that power accessible?
We've still got two and a half weeks, so.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
We'll, we'll figure all that out. I mean, right now, what they're doing is they're trying to get a-
Headcount.
A headcount of how many people plan to come, but the last time, more people showed up than what they, I mean, it was good 'cause more came, so.
Well, that's great.
They just kinda wanna have a contingency plan in case it's-
No, that's perfect. I just, I just wanna be able to know where we need to have the power.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with you on that, or someone else will.
We had talked about, uh, and I, uh, doing it there where we used to do, between, on Neosha Street, North Neosha. That had been one of the original plans, but that was a one back, we had talked about it. And I don't know that either one of you guys were at that meeting when I was there, but the, they talked about having those bands right there and blocking that street off between, you know, Gary Smith's and the bank, you know, and having them there for the, for the Saturday night. So, you know, I don't know if that's something you'd be interested in.
I think that got readjusted. And see what's happening is Max was really, had most of this here.
Yeah, he's the one that talked to me about that.
And we're trying to piece that together.
Yeah.
So.
Aren't most of the bands gonna be playing at the amphitheater?
Yes, it's smaller groups of music, one or two musicians downtown. But yes, the bands are at the amphitheater from eight to ten, yes.
Okay, well, whatever, whatever's needed, I guess we just have to get-
Yeah, me and Mark are together, that's not a problem.
I just wanna make you aware now.
No, I appreciate that.
Put it in the approval and-
Yeah, well, that way I have it on my notes to ask if we're getting close, and I haven't seen anything, so that's fine.
And is the Arts Council asking the city to do the porta-pots and the trash bins, or is that gonna be done by the Arts Council?
The Arts Council was currently taking care of that, but if the city wants to do it, they probably can.
I'm just asking, I didn't know if that was part of the request, so. So we know now.
No, it wasn't. But some of the money that they got from the tax grant is going toward this.
Yeah, five thousand dollars. Okay, so do, just-
Here, I make a motion to approve it.
We made a motion that we approve what needs to be done for Set Fest.
To use the, basically use the facilities and all that.
Yep, and a lot of downtown, music vendors on the sidewalks and the power downtown.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Before we go any further, I might just ask, were there food vendors involved with this at all?
At least one right now, the tacos.
That's a relative, I think, of Max's.
Will they be downtown, or will they be at the amphitheater?
I think that's at the amphitheater, yeah. And then I think Johnny V, they were gonna reach out to him and maybe someone else. But at least tacos is what was confirmed.
But all at the amphitheater, okay. Because I know that they would normally have a license fee, and we would need to maybe wait that whatever we were gonna do. Okay, just before we finish this vote, I wanna make sure. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, thank you. Okay, going forward, we're ready for governing body comments, Sharon?
Well, just thank you for supporting Set Fest. This is, the, actually, just might share with you, the Arts Council is working with Max's family and kinda putting this together in a way that, trying to honor him and friends. This has been his dream, he's done these for, for a number of years, so, anyway, that's all.
Larry?
I have nothing to say, no matter.
Mark?
I have three things. One, I've been approached by a member of the road department concerned about the, the curve there where the road department is, there where the road department is, where it's kind of a blind spot, and that they say there are these mirrors that you can put up.
Yeah, they talked to me.
Let me talk to the council here about putting it up so that they can see coming in and out of, so it's nice and safe, so they asked me to talk to the council about it, so I'm asking the council.
Okay, I may have to talk to you about that as well.
It's a good idea. It's a very good, so right there where the water plant is, and then you have the street department, that building blocks that corner, it's a blind spot. I've pulled out of there a few times and about got hit, it's a dangerous area.
Yeah, it's thirty mile an hour through there.
And it's not, they don't drive thirty through there.
Kind of Washington Street.
So, I agree with them, I think it's something we need to look, take care of, it is dangerous, especially pulling out in those big trucks and things like that.
I wish that we would have, when Saginaw's yard was for sale over there, I wish we'd have looked at doing that and putting our street department over there, because it is a horrible location for a street department. It's not even in the city limits.
No.
Yeah, the only fix for that up there is knocking down Derek's building, he has a bunch of stuff stored in, so...
So, anyway.
Do you need a motion, Mayor, for that?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I can, let me look, it may not even...
Find out what the cost is.
Cost it, if it's within my...
I think KDOT may even have something to say.
You guys are just good with me taking care of it, because I don't think it's gonna cost five thousand dollars to get one.
And it's for the guys that are going out?
So what it will do is, it'll sit on this corner, so when they're pulling out, they can see around that corner.
Be able to see both ways.
Be both ways. They have them up in, like, the mountains and stuff, on sharp corners, free to lay in places like that where they, people are driving those trucks around buildings, they have these kind of mirrors that are angled, so you can see traffic when you're pulling around the building and things like that, so...
Yeah, I pulled in there a few times to talk to the employees, and it's tough pulling out there.
Yes, it is.
So they will be installed on that, our property, not the state property?
No, they're on our property.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
As long as you guys are looking to be looking to get one, I'm happy to do it. I can work with Jeff and we can get it done.
So I don't know that we can have a motion for that, just go ahead and get that taken care of. Mark, your second thing?
The Historical Science Committee met a while back, Councilman Hahn was not able to keep a meeting, but one of the things I brought up was our signs going through town marking the Santa Fe Trail are just horrible, they're faded and whatever, so had Rick Paul design, give us four signs to look at, and this was the one that we decided on to recommend to the council, except we're not probably gonna be able to use this logo, this is a National Parks logo. We thought we'd put this logo here instead of that one. And I went through and looked through town, the route of the Santa Fe Trail, including Donan Street, and I come up with fourteen signs that I think we need. They're thirty-five dollars apiece at Red Bud, and we can, does everybody see this okay? Would you like to see the other three, would the council like to see the other three? We can pass, pass them down that way.
What you said the cost was, you were...
Thirty-five dollars. We do have some money in our budget, and I don't know if Nick has those numbers right off the top of his head, but probably not, but we do have some, we have, the council gave us some, some funding to buy signage here and there, and here's the one that...
Four ninety.
There is no problem with trade law for anything on the signs?
No, if we use that one, the city actually owns that.
Okay, that was my only question was...
We're a city committee, the Santa Fe Trail Two Hundred Committee, and that's, that logo that we would put on there. We might be able to get the National Park System to give us permission, but I don't know. They're pretty, they're pretty, yeah.
Yeah, that's what's...
So that's why we said that if we can't get permission, we put the Santa Fe Trail Two Hundred, and then I think you'll see, it doesn't have the date on it, like some of ours do, so it could work forever on that, but...
What would they be made out of?
I think they're just the normal signs, and that's just a skin that they put on them.
Metal or plastic, kind of a metal?
You know, I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't know. Whatever Rick makes.
I think this, are you guys reusing the signs that are there and how new skins put on there?
No, new ones.
Okay, 'cause I know our guy, okay, 'cause I know our guys have been, they found a company where you can buy skins for signs, and we've been reskining our old signs, so we don't spend the money on new metal. It saves us a bunch of money. Instead of costing us a hundred and some odd dollars to redo a sign, it's costing us about twenty dollars to redo a sign.
And then some of the signs we have, and the street department has worked well with us, they've moved some of them, but some of them are facing, like, in towards the road, and you literally can't see them until you get right, right to them, and so they need to be turned so that as you're going along there, you can see them as you're coming to them. And so I guess the committee would like approval from the council to move forward on that.
There's about a thousand dollars in their signed account.
This is four ninety?
Yep.
And then this street department would put them out?
Yes.
So you're saying this is the one you like?
That's what the three, I sent against councilmen.
Sharon says, no.
Put the other logo on it.
Yeah, put the other logo on it.
Sorry, TV out, so...
I was working my day.
Jason, we picked that one because it was simple and easy to read, it wasn't cluttered.
Right.
Some of the other ones...
I'm just wondering if you could go Santa Fe Trail Route underneath it?
Well, it says Route at the top.
I know, Route of the, so it gets smaller, the print's gonna get smaller.
That's an interesting way to do it, yeah. It cuts out a couple of words.
Makes its print larger, actually.
Makes your, your metal piece can be bigger, because you have less letters.
What'd you say, Jason?
I'm just saying, instead of saying Route of the Santa Fe Trail, Santa Fe Trail Route underneath.
And then your metal part can be bigger, yeah.
That allows for a larger logo and...
And even your words might be, the less words you have when people are writing it right, it's always better. What's that for, just on there?
How big are the signs?
I think that's the number of, he's did four, did four signs.
That would be, one of your focus pieces will be the center, and it'll be a lot bigger if you can...
Well, in Santa Fe are the first two words you see, top words you see.
I know, we got three committee members here, what do you...
Martin, explain again where the signs are going.
On Main Street, and then...
Replacing the brown signs?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, do those have to be brown, since they're recreational?
No, we didn't, the city did those, so those aren't done by the state.
The only reason I asked, I just did defensive driving, and the brown signs are, like, state colors.
Well, we do have a brown sign deal, but nobody liked it.
I didn't know if that was like a statement, they're all...
No, I don't think so.
The brown signs fade, seem to fade so fast.
But that's what, we have quizzes of, like, which colors represent what, I don't know. One thing I learned. Aren't they on the streets?
I mean, because people will pay attention to words, pay attention to images.
They're all a little bit everything for town. I mean, there's already something there, I mean, it's not like we're not, this is the first time we put them up.
But it's just that logo in the center is all that is.
I think that's, I...
No, there's not, it's the ones that we did, a long time ago, that the city did, they're brown, and they just say Route of the, I don't remember what the...
They're about fading now.
Route of the Santa Fe Trail.
Yeah, they're...
And there's no, there's no end one or nothing on.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think this, Jason's got, I mean, a lot of people, when they see a sign, they don't read it, because they don't want, they don't want to read it, but if you have an image that draws them to look at it and read it, you're probably gonna get a lot more...
All right, so we got three committee members.
I like Santa Fe Trail Route.
Santa Fe Trail Route.
And then make your image bigger than the middle.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
All right.
And no four on it, that four is...
That's just a number.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's number two, and then... All right.
Okay.
Or you could number each one, and they can, you know, have to follow.
Like a little...
But I mean, you're putting on a map.
Join the dots.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that if you worry about money.
Okay, well, I just want approval of the sign, I guess we wanted you guys to approve the signs.
Do I hear a motion to approve it, anybody?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, we like this one.
All right, thank you. At some point, we'll probably have to come back and ask for some more money.
When do you think you'll have those done, Mark?
Well, I'll call him, and he can probably get them done in a week or so, I, you know, we can get them up soon. The second, the third thing is, we're having this wagon show in September, seventeenth and eighteenth, correct? Seventeenth, eighteenth. And I've been getting, I'm starting to get contacted by wagon people who are bringing their wagons. A fellow from Texas contacted me, and man, is he ever Texas. And he's coming up, bringing a wagon, and, but he's bringing horses, and the reason he's bringing horses is that he's going on to another event that he'll need his horses. He needs a place to park his trailer, got his own generator, and he needs a place to put his horses at.
I would suggest the county...
Yeah, they charge out rodeo grounds. They charge.
Well, I mean...
He doesn't need anything fancy, he just needs a place where he can put out his electric fence and put it, and we've already got horses coming in that weekend, that the council's already approved.
North of the...
I just, I just say down there, because I know they have power down there for trailers and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And they already have pins set up, that's the only reason I say that.
We can price it again, I mean, that's been ten years ago.
You know, and I can, I can go talk to the commissioners and see if they're willing, just, just because we're having an event.
The event.
For the event.
Well, didn't we, part of that was done off sales tax grant, if I remember right?
Yeah, we, I don't think we did for that, we did that for the youth rodeo.
Okay.
We helped pay for the youth rodeo that one year, but I can go talk to the commissioners about that, I don't have a problem doing that.
Well, I need to get back with him fairly soon.
Well, I can go, I can go talk to Fox and clear, I can do that tomorrow.
I was just thinking, maybe at the north end of the ball field, if, you know, we let him, we've been letting a few people park there, but, but if you can get that worked out...
I just think of the horses and the mess and cleaning all...
He said he'd clean out everything up.
Okay.
What he said, so...
They'll have generators for their own power up there.
That's what he said, he'd have his own generator, so...
Let me, let me talk to commissioners, and if they say no, that, I don't have a problem with that.
And the user's, your idea back there would be a fallback then, but that'd be more convenient for him, I think.
All right, is the council okay that if that falls through, then we go up here?
Sure.
Because I don't know if there'll be room over here with, at Durham, because you got a gob of horses coming in, right?
Yeah, I need to hear from him again, him to...
Well, they're promoting it heavily now, so...
Sure, that'll work.
It's gonna be a big weekend, people, that's... Okay, so I'll just wait to hear from Nick and...
I'll get back to you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
I thought the Flint Hills Get Down got down, it was good.
Yeah, it was.
So, looking forward to that coming up year after year, so...
They had eighty-eight cars.
That was amazing.
It's just gonna get bigger and bigger.
He expected or was hoping for thirty-five, he said.
Well, and it's a great spot down there, it just was a great arrangement and it looked good.
I wish there were a bit more people to watch them go down Main Street, that would be fun, to watch them go down Main Street.
Yeah.
But I think a lot of people didn't realize.
I did see our police on a video have to go get one of them.
And he didn't write him a ticket, he warned him, said, "Don't do that."
What an idiot, did it right in front of the police.
They weren't even a block away.
He deserved, he deserved a ticket.
Well, he did.
Yeah, it's like, come on.
He stopped right there on Main Street, and the cops are going by, and, and he just burns rubber, and smoke's going everywhere.
Next thing you see, everybody's pulling over, and here comes the cops.
Wouldn't have been no warning when I was a kid, it wouldn't have been a ticket.
He wasn't the only one that did that, though. He just did...
He just, he wasn't smart enough to let them get a ways away before he decided to do it. Then drove by and he started doing it.
No, there was two police officers, cars got by.
It was a K nine unit, and then one of the other vehicles, yeah.
Maybe we need to designate a designated burnout zone on Main Street.
Someplace where we...
Before or after we fix the bad spots?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Before we fix them, they'd probably be better.
All right.
Okay, Nick, you didn't have anything else to say?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm gonna call you shortly.
Okay, um, two things, well, more than two things. H three American Fishing Tournament, they contacted me, they're wanting to have their tournament, I'd say, like, on Sunday, the twelfth, and they're planning on from six to two PM, six AM to two PM, just on Sundays, when they want to have the event.
August?
September.
September.
September, what was it again?
Sunday, September twelfth, from six AM to two.
It's a great event.
I think in the past, we provided porta potties for them, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
So...
So do you hear a motion? Do you want to have that happen?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero, thank you.
Okay, and then I was contacted by the American Sidecar, and they've changed their name, of the Flint Hills, instead of Association, Jim DeJornet, they want to use Durham Park for a couple hours on Saturday, September twenty-fifth. They come over and pull over and relax a little while and play some games, and then...
And they've been coming for years.
Was this the park, or was it the area in north of the fire station? I thought they set up there and gig rides around that open area north of the fire station. You know, the park's not a problem either.
Yeah, he has to...
I thought that's what they did.
He said the area behind the, the fire station and then the park.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, yeah, both places, yeah, yeah, that's, that's what they did before.
And they normally do some sort of fundraising when they're here. They raise money for some particular cause when they do it.
Yeah, so, and he has, he has insurance, he has insurance and everything like that, he's emailed me the insurance, I told him I'd let him know tomorrow.
What date, were they gonna do that?
That was the twenty-fifth of September, and that's in the afternoon, he didn't give me, because they're coming in from somewhere, he said it'd be about two to three hour block, they would be there, so...
Yeah, well, they've done it for several years now, and there's been no issues any of the time that they were down there.
I gave them a tour one year, rode in one of those sidecars, that was an interesting ride. And you're way down there.
Like a Wahoo Park.
Did you, yeah?
There's no breakaway in that sidecar.
Feel like you're just dragging on the ground, it's all there, slow.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Okay?
Well, whoever.
Whoever, okay, Keith?
Jason.
Jason, all those in favor? Post, okay, motion carries six zero.
And then I've been in contact with AIPAC, um, David Duncan, who's the guy in charge, the lead guy for AIPAC, was down here last week when it was really hot to take a look at things, um, they are doing some testing on the oil and trying to bet, find the best solution, because if there's an issue with the oil or cure sticking, it's not an option to put more oil and chips down, because it's just going to peel up. So they're working through what the solution is, um, so they're working on it, they were down here last week and looked at it, um, he was down there, I think, twice last week and looked at Dave, and he's going to talk to the oil supplier and some other folks, and try to come up with some kind of solution for it, so.
Okay, so it's ongoing this.
Yeah, yeah.
That's something that's not unusual, over the years that the county has done this on their chip and seal, they had various issues, depending on year to year, when they changed the type of rocks that they used, remember, there was one year that,
Yeah.
you wind up with, down Valley Street was one, and then the other was down, uh, Stevens, or not Stevens, but.
It bled, it bled through.
Well, it bled through, and all you got was dust, it, it all ran to the side of the road, and they blamed that on the oil, too.
But I've never seen it, what it did.
No, no, that was totally something different.
I've never seen it do that.
And Jeff Loser, I've talked to Jeff Loser, I've talked to Joe Palick, um, they're all in agreement that there's an issue. Brady Hestrom at BG, who did the engineering on it, agrees, um, they're not arguing it, they're going to try to do something, they just got to figure out what that is.
What it is, yes, I agree with that.
So that's the deal with that, so that's ongoing. Um, fourteen Yosha Street sold at, um, the tax auction.
Really?
For twenty-five hundred bucks, I was told that Gary Callen bought it. So he's no longer the owners of fourteen Yosha Street.
I know he has plans to rent some of those spots to Christie for the, hold back the length, so they'll get off of the street, she wants them off of the street, which is good.
Yeah, great, and just a reminder, we have the city application meeting Thursday, the fifth, at five thirty.
Yeah, that was five thirty.
Five thirty, yeah. I think, that's all we got.
Okay, I have just two things, um, first thing is, just remind us, all of us, because I have done this, we have all talked about the one meeting, the one quick meeting that we had at the amphitheater, that we would all, if we would, donate that money back to the amphitheater, so.
We already did that.
Yeah.
Oh, we did do the donation?
Yeah, we already did, we already took your money.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
They told me, they told me when we did the swimming pool, they couldn't take the money, that they, that we had to pay it back. Immediately, that's what the.
You're making a donation, so I don't, I don't see how that's possible.
That could be held out of the check.
You're making a donation, so I don't.
Okay.
Cindy didn't seem to have an issue with that.
Well, that's fine, as long as we've already paid, I just have to write my check, so I will.
Yeah, no, we, we, so, when Megan did it, she asked me about it, and, cause I think somebody, I don't know who emailed her and told her that they were donating that one, but she asked me, is the whole council, everybody doing it, and I said, yes, they are, and that's what they.
Yeah, I had told her about it.
Yeah, that may have been, it was you we had to talk to about it.
Text her because.
Well, things might have changed since back then, I know.
I don't, I don't need to do that, you know, this is what we all agreed on that day down there.
And she heard it out, so I don't, there's, there's no issue with that.
Yeah, it should be.
And then we donated a check to Chief when he was on the police force, remember? We.
I might not have been here then.
When he was going through a health issue.
Sean?
Yes.
Okay.
We donated, we donated a.
Yeah, that was just two years I was gone.
We donated a, everybody donated a.
Yeah, you guys are donating the money, you're not.
Well, that's what, you know, we did with the swimming pool, because we had so many meetings trying to get the swimming pool, and we all donated one meeting, but then they said that they couldn't hold it out, so they said we all had to write a check back. It's fine, we're good, as long as, as long as we pay, pay our bits. Okay, and then the other thing is, is, um, I just want to kind of give a shout out to our, our law enforcement, our police, they're doing a good job, we've had a lot of things going on, they've been very, uh, they've been there, they've been, I, I feel like they're doing a good job, I mean, all of our employees do a good job, but I just want to give a shout out to them, I, you know, observe them doing, as well beyond that.
They're, they're busy guys, you tell you what, you wouldn't believe the amount of stuff they do on a daily basis, um, it's not less than around.
Yeah.
I appreciate the, the postings that, that Chief's been doing, uh, to, to get, get the information out to the public, I think that's, that's really good.
Had a lot of favorable comments around the community about it.
You know, and Sean's done a really good job with people that have an issue with the police, um, because they get, their kids get pulled or whatever, he'll meet with them, he, he did this last week, he met with a parent, um, at, at El Rancho de Viejo, because she thought they were targeting the kid, well, Sean sat him down and he had a conversation with her, and she agreed that her kid was screwing up. And Sean's like, we're not targeting, we're not even, he's not even on our radar until he does something he's not supposed to be doing, um, and we treat him like everybody else, you know, in the moment. So Sean just said, let's do this, instead of posting on Facebook that we're just out targeting people, let's have a conversation so you know the whole scope of what's going on.
Well, we do have, uh, quite a bit of underage driving going on in town right now.
I don't know, I don't know the kids.
I believe our most wanted posters of the newspaper came from the county, though.
Yes, yeah, those county.
I thought that was interesting to see, we're back, we're backing up a little now, we're back to most wanted, if you see them, tell us. I thought that was humorous, but.
If I see them.
Hopefully it doesn't turn out to be a disaster for anybody, not for them or anybody else.
Well, yeah, you don't want people pursuing them, because they, obviously if they're running from the law, they probably don't have much for you or anyone else.
Don't want that.
I was going to ask our attorney, but he's not here now, if we could somehow increase our fines on our, on our ATVs and things that are going through town, because it seems like we've got same people continuously break, breaking the law, and I don't know if they're getting tickets or what, but, um, I mean, I see them parked down in front of the Mexican restaurant.
Yep.
I mean, that's, right there, that's a violation, I see him parked on, on Main Street and, and I think we, I think we need to do something to.
Yeah, I'll talk to Sean, I'll talk to Sean, I know they've been pulling people over and writing tickets, some of them, like the ones that you see parked, like that Ranger one, that is a person that works for, um, I think it's Hank, and for, if you're using it for agricultural purposes, you can drive it on state highways, and that's what he's using it for, he's using it, he's working out on the farm, and he's driving it to town, and, and that's allowed by state law, um, so some of the people are using it in that regard, and it's hard for Sean and his guys to be like, well, okay, let's drive to your farm.
It's a loophole.
Right, well, it is a little bit, but the guy that does that majority, I know who you're talking to, who it is, and he does work for Hank White and does his farm stuff for him, so.
What's the color of the permits that are supposed to be on?
Orange.
Yeah, I think there's several that don't even have permits, so.
What would we do on, uh, on the grass in the street? Do, who enforces that?
James does, um, and we've, we deal with it.
As it happens.
As it happens, I mean, he warns them, and a lot, like, we had a problem across the street over here, where whoever the mower was for bowling and Subway was doing it, and he went over and took care of that, and I know he's taking care of it in some other places. But I agree, I mean, you drive down the street, and you see a bunch of grass in the road, you're like, come on, just go get a blower and blow up my shitty yard.
Makes me want to drive around with my blower in my truck.
It bothers me, too, I, I'm the one that had the biggest problem with that probably, because I'm the reason that ordinance is, we have that ordinance, because I hate it, I think it looks trashy.
Well, and it is dangerous.
Doesn't cause a problem, I suppose.
Well, if you're on a motorcycle, it's, it's dangerous.
Or motorcycle, you know, you have to be driving.
Plus, we have a horrible drainage system anyway in town, and if you start getting all that grass in, in there, that's just going to make it even worse.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody have anything else? We've covered all kinds of stuff tonight.
I was just going to say, we had a great event down at the high school today with the Soul of Color.
Yeah.
Had some good attendance down there.
I was a little worried we were going to have sun, I thought, oh my gosh, what are we going to make here? But it turned out.
I didn't see a K U one, did it make it to?
No.
I, I was wondering how.
I was curious, I didn't see it, I was wondering.
He did not, but you know what, they actually had a car, and I don't think K C even had a car. So.
I was just curious, you said there would be a K U one down at the school.
It was down to the last minute.
I didn't see it.
Okay, K C's working on heroes.
All right.
That's going to give our time, since you gave me a lot of time. Yep.
Uh, at that, on that note, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, and second, these two, right? Okay, Keith and Mark, all.